I call this work session of the Norfolk Public School Board on November 8th, 2023 to order.
I didn't know that anybody, somebody was going to be.
Yeah, did you want to?
Yes.
Do you want me to talk to Ms. Bazin and establish what needs to be established for the vote?
Yes, that's fine.
All right, Ms. Bazin has notified the Chair earlier today that she needs to participate in today's meeting by electronic communication, which is permissible as long as the Board has a quorum physically present in one place throughout the meeting. In order to allow her to do that, there needs to be a couple of things established on the record for the minutes, and then the Board has to hold a roll call vote. So Ms. Bazin, I understand that you're requesting to participate electronically because of a medical condition. Is that right?
Correct.
And could you tell us in a general fashion about where you'll be participating from?
Participating from the House.
And that's in Norfolk, Virginia?
In Norfolk, in Norfolk.
All right. With that, the Clerk will call the roll, and a vote of yes or its equivalent will be to allow Ms. Bazin to participate in today's meeting by electronic communication means.
Buffalo?
Yes.
Clanton?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
And Martin?
Yes.
We're ready to start.
All right. Up first, we have our NPS legislative priorities update.
Want to do the roll call?
What's that?
Want to do the roll call?
Well, that's what I was wondering.
Yo, he just needed to establish that so she can be a part of the roll.
Okay, yes, please do the roll call.
Bazin?
Here.
Buffalo?
Here.
Clanton?
Here.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
And Martin?
Present. Okay, on with our legislative planning and legislative updates with Ms. Kathy Burcher.
Good afternoon, Chair, Dr. Martin, and Vice President Buffalo, members of the School Board. It's good to be with you again today. Got the microphones all set up. And I will tell you, you did receive copies of the draft legislative program, the 2024 legislative program, and so wanted to make sure that you had a copy of that. The one item, and we'll talk to it really briefly in just a second, that you did also receive this morning was our report on the outcomes of the 23 elections that were held yesterday. So actually, one of the slides, I think we're getting ahead. You know what? I'm pressing the button myself, aren't I? That's what's happening. I'm getting ahead of my own self. We'll talk specifically about the outcomes for Norfolk when we get to that slide, but I wanted to give you a brief update on where we are with the draft and as we move towards looking at the legislative priorities for Norfolk Public Schools. A couple of updates I wanted to give you about Adventist Strategies. Ron Jordan, as you can tell, is not here today. Ron has been working, as he has shared with most of you, to take a little bit of a step back and to be less out front, whether it's at the General Assembly or at these lot, a lot of these meetings, more of a consultant behind the scenes role. So I wanted to share that. And in other news, we have just hired Lauren Gilbert to come on board starting Wednesday to support the out front effort, particularly at the General Assembly. For the last 11 years, she has worked with the Sworson Institute, which if you don't know, that that is a training for, a training ground for political activists. They have programs all the way from high school all the way through to adults. And many members of the General Assembly, elected school boards, engaged citizens across the Commonwealth have gone through that program. So she's well known to a lot of folks, and we're really excited to get her on board.
Congratulations, Lauren.
Thank you. It's a great hire for us, and it'll be nice to have one more person, you know, carrying the load, particularly at the General Assembly. And so with that, I will get going on literally breaking news. When I had to submit the slides, we didn't have official names. Now we do. And I mentioned this last time, or this time last year, we talked about the changes in your delegation. Every 10 years, we do redistricting here in Virginia, and again, that happened here. Your delegation shrunk a little bit, just by one, but also changed, the people changed. Bless you. And so I wanted to point out to you, and the names you probably know because you probably tracked the election, but this is your delegation. Senator Bill De Staff represents the now 20th Senate District. About 10% of his district is the city of Norfolk. In Senate District 21, we now have Senator-Elect Angela Williams Graves, who's very familiar to you. She's coming. She's currently serving in the House of Delegates. That district is 100% Norfolk, which is very exciting. And the compactness of the districts is super helpful as well. House District 92 is Delegate-Elect Anita Anthony. She has 70% of Norfolk in her district. Returning in House District 93, although the number is different, is Delegate Jackie Glass, who has a 100% Norfolk City District now with 93. In District 94 is Delegate-Elect Phil Hernandez. He has also a 100% Norfolk City District. So you all really do have a delegation that will be very, very focused on your priorities, which is great. And then House District 95, much like that Senate District 20, is a Virginia-based, Virginia Beach-based district. Returning to the House of Delegates is Delegate-Elect Alex Askew. He served from 2019 to 2021 in the House, and he'll be returning. So that is your delegation. A little smaller, a little less seniority, but that's kind of the news of the day out of the General Assembly. About 600 years of institutional knowledge retired or lost through primary process or yesterday in the General Assembly, so big changes. And obviously, as we look towards preparing Take Your Legislator Today to Work Day or to School Day, that's going to be an important consideration, is ensuring or including all of the new delegation. I wanted to just kind of touch base on the very late budget adoption that you all saw from the General Assembly. The final fiscal year 24 budget was adopted in June. These were the key drivers for Norfolk Public Schools. Interestingly, and I'll point this out, our fiscal year in Virginia, as you all know, ends on June 30th every year. We have a two-year spending plan. We adopt biennial budgets. So we had a second-year spending plan, so that June 30th date wasn't as, for the members of the General Assembly, different than local government, wasn't as much as a hard stop, frankly, as it will be this June. We do, we will have a biennial budget beginning when the Governor presents his in December. We have to have a budget adopted this year by June 30th at the General Assembly in order to ensure continuation of the operation of Virginia's government. Obviously, different rules in locally elected government. I did want to point out, one of the big drivers of the budget, aside from finally reversing, although not fully, the support staff cap that has existed since the recession and the salary adjustment for half a year, and I put quotes on the flexible funding. It was flexible funding, one-time funding, $418 million across the Commonwealth. Because of the at-risk inclusion in the calculation, Norfolk really benefited from that one-time spending. The Governor did put some suggestions on how that funding should be spent. So I put flexible there, but certainly it was very, very focused on tutoring and learning loss.
Quick question on that one. When you said suggestions, it's not mandated, but just a suggestion that's left up to the local body on how those funds are spent?
Madam Chair, and Dr. Burstong, I should have said hello to you as well, so I apologize. The authority to operate the schools by the Constitution is granted to this Board, and so they are, they were recommendations from the Governor to spend 70% of that flexible pot on learning loss, focused on tutoring with very specific student counts. And a plan was required to be submitted to the Department of Education, but that's actually not different than what you've done with much of the one-time federal COVID funding in particular, and it's not unusual. But the Constitution grants the authority to operate the schools to the local school board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on, again, I drafted this last week, so give me some grace here because we had some changes, but I wanted to just make sure you all would be aware of the types of legislation we saw. And let me also, as you all know, this doesn't mean I've captured everything. We could certainly see surprises. We saw surprises last year, and we gathered quickly to see where Norfolk wanted to be on some of those bills. But again, I won't read all of these to you. A couple I do want to point out, teacher licensure changes. We anticipate looking at teacher licensure, particularly related to the shortage of teachers, and ensuring that we have a system to maintain high quality, but also that we're not building any unnecessary roadblocks to prevent students from becoming teachers. And then the other thing, the other component I'll push out, make sure that you see here, controversial materials. I think we'll have, because of the election results, a little bit more of a pushback on that. But the big one here is really around the review process for SOL and school accreditation. The Board of Education is working very hard to make significant changes to how we accredit schools and how we use standardized testing to do that. I would anticipate, particularly given the election results, we may see some legislation to, you know, make sure we're staying on track with the goals and outcomes that we know Virginia wants to see. So that's what I think we can expect this session. Again, very similar types of bills. And no surprise, the federal funding cliff, we might see some spending related to smoothing those edges. I don't know that we'll see it in the Governor's budget, but certainly in the House and Senate. This is very small font, but you do have it. Some key dates, they come up really quickly, drafts for legislation by the 30th. And all the way through, the big dates here is the Governor will present his biennial budget, and that's the starting point for the General Assembly. We'll see that on December 20th. We'll submit a report to you soon thereafter with anything that has any implication for Norfolk, including distributions. Session starts on the 10th of January. It's a long session. It will run until March. And so we really have between now and the end of November to request drafts of legislation from our delegation. You have the draft that I have put together for you for your priorities for 2024. What I did was looked at the previous draft. It's what we do. We look at the previous draft. We eliminate those things that we accomplished. And then knowing what we saw last session and what you all have often mentioned as priorities, and the J-Larke report, which I'll get to, built in some recommendations for new items. And again, we are well timed to move this along. I have that November 30th date. So long as we are in a spot where we feel confident we can get draft requests, if there is legislation you all would like to initiate, we are in a good spot here. My goal is to receive feedback from you all on this proposed draft. And I said the middle of November until I realized next week is the middle of November. I'm not sure how that happened. But hopefully by the end of next week, that way I can get a final draft, still in draft form to you until it's adopted, ahead of Thanksgiving, so that we can be fully prepared for both Take Your Legislator to School Week, but also ensure that we're in a good place to make those requests for draft. We can also request drafts and not file the bills. So if there's something you all want to pursue, and then in final adoption, it's not something that this Board wants to move forward with, that is not an issue at all. We can eliminate that. So what is on your draft? And I know it looks very, very large. I tried my best to make it clear to you, using italics for newly recommended language and costumes for those things that were accomplished. The reason it seems so large is the J-Larke K-12 funding study. If you all recall, that was legislation initiated by you. Senator Lewis carried that legislation that created the study. So literally, there are school boards across the Commonwealth of Virginia grateful to Norfolk Public Schools for that study, because we sent a report on that. What it demonstrates is overwhelmingly, we are underfunding the needs of our kids in our schools and the needs, and frankly, underfunding the formulas, and the formulas are not reflective of the needs. So we're underfunding formulas that aren't even getting us there. And so the J-Larke funding report is captured in your legislative proposed agenda in a category that really focuses on the biggest, the biggest opportunities for Norfolk based on the recommendations. I will tell you that language in the budget that was adopted in June kicked the can down the road a little bit on this report. It gives the General Assembly until December of 2024 to submit a plan on how to address the report. I still expect to see legislation, and in fact, I expect to see in the Governor's proposed budget, items that are reflected in this report. So it doesn't mean, I don't want you to think at all that we're not going to do anything, or the General Assembly will not do anything until December. So the report seems really long, but the real focus of it talks about reversing the recession-era cuts. Believe it or not, we're still talking about those. Those have really big impacts for Norfolk. And then staff salaries was included. The local composite index, it's a flattening of the peaks and valleys we sometimes see as those are rebenchmarked. And that's incredibly impactful, particularly on school divisions like Norfolk that have a high percentage of students in the at-risk category. And so the recommendation there to level that off. Codifying the at-risk add-on, I have included it was an initiated bill by you all last session. Interestingly, Delegate Glass carried that legislation. We had to strike it the day it was to be heard because it received a FIS, which is a fiscal impact statement, which meant it had a cost, even though Delegate Glass and I both knew there was no cost. This report actually says there's no cost. And so again, depending on where you all want to move with your legislative program, I am certain there is a very encouraged patron in one Delegate Jackie Glass, who would be able, would be very willing to take that on. Another big piece of the report was the extraordinary underfunding of special education services across the Commonwealth. That is something that you all have mentioned previously, so I have included it here as one of the top recommendations for you all out of that report. On page, and you see that reflect on page two, on page three of your document, you have a re-benchmarking item, kind of middle of the page. I've added this here because benchmarking was portions of the re-benchmarking value, and that's when the General Assembly looks at current programs, and they update the costs based on changes in the cost. So whether, it's very technical, so it's a number of students, inflation, a lot of other components. Inflation was capped during the Great Recession in an effort to save costs. This will likely be the first re-benchmarking where the inflation has outpaced the cap. And so we do, we are starting to have some concern that the re-benchmarking number will not be fully reflective of those additional costs. And so your item here is a full re-benchmarking, and ideally, we would have liked to have seen that reverse, the cap taken out, but ensure that if there is any impact related to the cap, that there is a hold harmless funding for school divisions that would lose funding. And then the one other item that I have added is on the very last page, the very last bullet under your opposition statements. And again, you know, we talked a whole lot about this last session as these bills became forward, and we knew at Adventist that we need to sit down with you all and see where you wanted to be on these bills. And so I have added language there that says that Norfolk Public Schools opposes any efforts to mandate the placement or banning of books. So again, for your consideration. And so those are the changes and recommendations for the program. But again, look forward to receiving your feedback. Any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, so appreciated. Thanks, Heather, for sharing this here. One of the things that I have, and I think I see it under position statements, but I think that I'd like to see it since we're getting ready for budget, and that's the Funding for Virginia Preschool Initiative. I know that that's been a hot topic, particularly to the funding that we have received from the federal government to allow us to increase the number of students that could be able to participate. And I feel as though if the Commonwealth doesn't do something, that will be reversing all the gains that we had put in place, particularly with our pre-K four, three and four classes. So if we might even, you know, be something that somebody could carry. And that was my second kind of caveat to them. Have we identified particular bills that we wanted, or is that something that we're going to be doing over the next week or two for our delegation to be able to file by the 30th?
Madam Chair, if I may, and I appreciate you bringing up, and the childcare subsidy program was federally funded, extended through the COVID, some of the COVID funding from the federal government. And in fact, we saw dramatic decreases in the number of children across the country living in poverty, and it was that access to early childhood. So thank you for flagging that we'll add that. It's about a $318 million cost across the Commonwealth, so I can break that out for Norfolk as well. So we'll definitely put that in the next, the next draft. The process right now is, your delegation has, keeping in mind, some of them, some of them just found out yesterday, your delegation has not seen this yet. It's still in draft form. I am happy to begin having conversations. Certainly, the at-risk add-on is something that I think Delegate Glass is ready to go and run with and call out some folks. We're saying it costs something when we have a report here that says it doesn't. But we'll follow your lead. You know, I'm, like I said, happy to begin having conversations with your delegation about those items that you, where you might want to initiate some legislation. We have until the end of the month to make those requests.
Yeah, and I think with the timing, because I think our Take Your Legislator to School Day is on the first.
First December.
So that would be the day after their filing, pre-filing, we've done. So anything that would give you direction based on here from the Board to be able to have those initial discussions and to see what we can get carried now, specifically because we have both a direct Senator that's in our city and as well as delegates on both sides in legislation, we can get some support. Now, I think all of them, with the exception, well, all of them in the most part, are strong on public education. And I think that, like you said, like Delegate Glass would pick up some things. And so, yeah. So I just think that we, whatever we have in here, if we can keep that conversation going so that she has clear direction, so that we can get that going, so we can make sure that we're represented.
Anyone else? Ms. Bazin?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Martin. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here, for the presentation, Ms. Burcher. I'm sorry I'm not there in person. So I have two questions right now at this point. I know I will have much more feedback in the next week, probably. But two things I wanted to touch on is I believe that Governor Yonkin or the General Assembly had, there was a Behavioral Health Task Commission or Task Force that was put in place that was supposed to come back with a report this November. Do you know what the status of that report is and what recommendations or legislation may come out of that report?
And that was the Behavioral Health Commission. They have a requirement to study the access to mental health supports and services for students in public schools. There was actually a $2.5 million allocation to pilot that program. We did receive an interim report a few weeks ago. We have, the final report may have filed, and I haven't seen it yet. I have not gotten an alert that it filed, but I will follow up with you and check on that, and we'll circulate any of the recommendations that are included in that report with the Board. And if I can just, an interesting component there, and you all know this, but typically, the typical provision and how we get mental health services to kids in schools is very, very focused on school division staff. This pilot looked at how do we allow for outside of school division staff to start to provide those services to kids. So I will get that report and circulate it to you. I will follow up when I get home on whether or not, because it was due November 1st.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, that would be great. And the second question, or really comment, well, question and comment, I guess, is really a question for you and what you're hearing about any legislation that might be coming out of some of the Department of Education conversations, committee work around chronic absenteeism. And I ask that because I know some of the meetings and conferences, you know, that I've been to, you know, there's been some, you know, board members, including myself, you know, that have raised the question or possibility of looking at start time and its impact on chronic absenteeism and attendance. And so are you, what are you, are you hearing anything on that front? Or I know, I know that the department, you know, typically the response is that is for local control, but there is, I think, it sounds like anyone from the way it's coming up in some of these conversations, like perhaps increasing interest in legislation around it at the state level, perhaps. I mean, it's just from the way it's coming up. So I'm just wondering what you're, what you might be hearing, or if you think that's something, a policy, a position that Norfolk could get behind.
Madam Chair, so chronic absenteeism is coming up mostly in the conversations related to school accreditation, and whether or not to, or how to continue to capture or not capture chronic absenteeism as a portion of school accreditation. Obviously, since the pandemic, chronic absenteeism has become a significant concern for a lot of schools across the Commonwealth, across the country, in fact, as well. I am not, at this point, hearing anything related to legislation. We have certainly seen legislation around absenteeism and what would be an approved absence and not an approved absence. So we'll certainly track that, but I have not heard any specific discussion around absenteeism outside of accreditation conversations. Keeping in mind, we could certainly see legislation related to accreditation, which could tangentially get to absenteeism too, but we'll certainly track that.
Right. And I guess I shouldn't be clear. I guess when I'm saying, what I'm saying is, in the conversation around chronic absenteeism and looking at the factors that impact or influence chronic absenteeism, that's what I'm mostly referring to. Like, how do we address those factors? So that's really what I'm talking about. So anyway, I will, I will provide more feedback on that in the coming weeks, but in the coming week. But thank you so much.
And I will put a placeholder in the next draft that I send you all related to chronic absenteeism so that we make sure we're capturing something there.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. Burcher.
Thank you all so much.
Appreciate you driving out here to give us this update.
I will get you all an updated draft and look forward to hearing your feedback on the proposal.
All right, up next, we have our school board monitoring calendar. Rodney, did you have something to say about the monitoring calendar?
Is it, is it possible for us to do it along with the, the monitoring? The reason I ask that, so we've, you know, we've adopted goals. We have some interim measures and goals that Minute Dr. Burstong and the team have provided to us in terms of what we would be monitoring, not only on the target for this year, but over pretty much five years, I think. Most of our goals are five-year goals. And so the, the calendar that, you know, the Board's calendar on this, that we need to work on putting together, is not only identifying, I think, what the administration has done a good job already, pointing out to us the time of year that certain data would be available, but we really need to be able to map out what we're going to be monitoring month by month, associated with the particular goal and the particular interim measure. Trying not to do more than three in a meeting. And so I just wanted us to kind of come back to that so that we can work on and work with the administration on really mapping out our monitor, monitoring calendar over the timeline that the goals are. And, and so we are clear on what our cadence will be, you know, all things operating efficiently. So that was why I was asking if we can maybe do that as we talk through the, the report, or after we talk to the report, through the report, so we can continue to work on that moving forward. Because we could also include in the monitoring calendar, you know, not just what we're going to progress, monitor in our board, non-negotiables. We talk about our quarterly evaluations. We can put that in the calendar. So that board calendar that we've had and talked about for years is about what the monitoring calendar will look like with those things integrated in, rather than us ending up with multiple calendars to try to manage. And I just think we can take what's been given to us and then build it out so that we're clear on what we should expect as a board to progress, monitor every month from now until we are complete.
Okay, so in addition to these measures here, what else did you want to include?
I'm not trying to change the measures. I'm trying to list them out. If you, I guess, if you look at the, the monitoring calendar that we have.
Are you referencing this?
Yes. So, so we know we have five goals, and we know we adopted the fifth goal, I guess, last month, and that we asked Dr. Burstong and her team to come back with the interim measures for the fifth goal. So the administration knows better than we do when the data is going to be available for us to monitor. And if you look at what's in the far right column, I believe is a, is the administration sharing with us when the information would be available, and an effort to tie the five goals that we have to those measures.
Well, five is not on here.
Right, right, right. It's not on there yet, but I think that's largely because they put the calendar together before we finished adopting their fifth goal. So, but within each goal, we have interim measures or goals that have been given to us. So within the chart, So within the chart then, let's, so this is November. So it would show, for example, that if we're going to do Goal Two Star Fall Performance, then we would know what would be Goal Two, which interim measure it is, and, and we would know. We would literally know from now until the rest of the year, and, but for some other change, we would know what we would be doing for the next three to five years in terms of monitoring. And then that also helps to, helps the administration then, and the agenda planning team, that stuff is laid out. Also, in the non-negotiable as a board, we said that we were going to commit ourselves to spend no less than 50% of our meeting time monitoring progress on student outcome goals. So if we have a two-and-a-half-hour work session, or if our goal is to have however long, if we do some during a workshop or during a business meeting, then we have to account for us trying to reach that goal as we lay out our agendas. And so, so it's not any measure that I'm recommending that we change or any goal that we're, that we change, it's just how we lay it out on the calendar so that the board, the administration, the public, everybody knows what it is, for example, we will be doing next month, you know, specific to the goals that we've established in the interims that the superintendent has provided to us. And that's why I was saying that, you know, I'm glad we're talking about it, but I think we can just work on building that out and, and then come back and, because it's going to take us some time to get used to this, and doing things a little differently than perhaps we've done before. So those are my comments regarding the calendar.
I have a, I have a question.
Okay.
When you guys come together for agenda planning, is it possible to use the, the monitoring calendar that we have and then take, you know, you can do a poll from the board, you know, do you want this report, that report, whatever reports, and then just focus on that draft model that Mr. Jordan had put out and just say, this is what we want to focus our discussion on. Everything else can just be a report that the board receives. Staff doesn't have to prepare anything on it, and then it just allows us the time that we need in order to work through the data. And then if we have a question, we can, you know, lean on our experts. But that way, they're not doing extra work, we come prepared, we have the time to have discussion amongst us and go from there.
And I think the goal, as we, as we get more comfortable in this, making this our routine, that will help to give clear direction to the administration on what to prepare and when, so they're not doing extra work unnecessarily.
Yeah, it'd be all laid out.
Streamlined.
Great.
And that's, right, and that's exactly what we agreed we would get to. And, and as Dr. Gabriel was just saying, if there's additional information that the administration wants to make available to us, they can just make it available. But what we get and what we monitor really should be tied specific to that particular goal and that particular item. And so like, when we, when we get to the, the board goals, I think one of the pieces of information that I know we all love that they gave us was a school-by-school report on something, I can't remember exactly, which, which is good, but it, but it may not necessarily tie to the specific goal that we are monitoring today, but it may be information that we are preempt questions that we may have by them providing that information. But if it's not specific to the, to the goal and the measure that we are looking at on that report, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need it. And so trying to help this cadence and sequence get in place so that we're getting what we're need, what we need, the administration has understanding of what we need, and hopefully we are helping the administration to not overwork themselves, giving us a lot of stuff that is good for us to have, but we may not spend a minute on in a, in monitoring a particular goal in a particular month.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
I think you're, I think you're calling me, right?
Yes.
I was just, I was just going to add that one of the aspects of the school-by-school report may be beneficial is perhaps with some of the non-negotiable work that we do, you know, and that's to be seen, you know, as we, as we kind of dive into what that might look like, but that's where I see some of the school-by-school perhaps, you know, maybe useful information or useful data for us in that respect, if I understood what you were saying.
Yes, it could go there, or even as the, you know, the administration is coming forward outside of what we're doing in terms of our progress monitoring, it wants to give us an update on some of the strategic planning process beyond what we agreed we're going to focus on, that information could be, could be provided. But like I said, just trying to get all of that in a, in a sequence cadence and in rhythm is what I think we need to practice and kind of take our time getting it right while at the same time being, I think I said before, you know, urgent patience about practicing this while at the same time not feeling like we aren't staying on top of what we said we were going to stay on top of.
Definitely agree.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Up next, we have discussion of association memberships. There was a discussion this past week, I guess, in the past couple of weeks about we had, we had approved some funding for memberships, and of course, this is all for our professional development, and some were joined and some weren't. And so I just wanted to have, let's see, I have, okay, let me see, let me see this paper. Okay. So the membership costs for organizations, Council of Great City Schools is $46,746. Norfolk School Board Association is $12,975. VSBA, which of course, we use their services for state policies, is $13,176.10. And COSPA, we, we have not formally joined. I know some people are attending those meetings on their own, as they are with the other organizations. So it was requested that we put this on the agenda to discuss today. So move, you know, we're starting our budget season, so we're, you're going to have to have this conversation eventually anyways. So in particular, the question was, why, why weren't, didn't we join the Council of Great City Schools?
No, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I think the, what, what I recall, I was, some of us were at the conference. And, oh, I know, yeah, I was, I was at the conference. And just for full disclosure, I was at the conference. I'm on the executive committee for the, for the council. And someone asked, brought up to me and tapped my shoulder and said, hey, you all haven't paid your bill. I'm like, what are you talking about? So, so when I inquired about it, that's where I found that there was apparently some conversation going on about whether or not we were going to continue our membership. And so I just was not aware that there was any discussion going on in that, in that regard. So that was what prompted that question, because I'm not sure where, where that came from. Now, each year is part of our budget. At least what we've done historically is we've accounted for, in our budget, what our board memberships would be. And so we, we've already passed the budget, so it didn't quite follow if we had included our memberships in our school board budget, why it was coming up now about whether or not we would follow through on that, on the membership and paying the bill. And then, can I see that sheet? Yes. And then as far as NSBA is concerned, we were, the school divisions in Virginia were part of VS, part of NSBA through our relationship with VSBA. So Virginia through VSBA is no longer a member of NSBA, and Virginia joined COSPA. So the COSPA framework is, it's the Consortium of State School Boards Association. So the State School Board Association is a member. Individual school divisions aren't members, and our participation in quote, whatever you want to call it, secondary membership in COSPA is a result of our membership in VSBA. So there is no NSBA payment to be made. By being a member of VSBA, we are also members of COSPA, so there's no additional detail or additional fee that is associated with that, other than when members of the board attend events that require, you know, require payment, like going to the annual conference or the, some of us went to the Urban Boards Alliance Conference and those types of things.
Do you have something to say?
Yeah, I was just gonna, just, I guess, when you hear the Council of Great City Schools, for us, we kind of know, but for those who are just kind of watching with no real context behind it, so it's, it's an association for the largest urban school divisions in the country. Norfolk is the only member in the Commonwealth, because of course Norfolk Public Schools.
Richmond.
And Richmond.
Richmond.
And we're grandfathering because we've lost, but historically, we've been a member for a very, very long time. And there's the opportunities, and I've gone to the conferences in the past, really to connect with other urban school divisions and board members, staff, and so forth. And so I know that we, there have been other opportunities, you know, things that they'll do for us, and then, of course, the biggest thing that we all experienced was the training, which was a little different. And, you know, we chose not to continue with that one, but there are other things that are there. And it's just like the same thing when I look at Cube and NSBA and COSPA, it's a multitude of different things that gives us a very different perspectives and experiences that we're able to come back to this board and utilize in enacting our work. So I agree in the respect, because I've, I've looked at that one, that we approved the budget, those items were in the budget. And so when we voted on the budget and the school board's budget, there shouldn't have been any additional discussion around it. It was done, we should have paid whatever needs to be paid, and if the board makes a decision to go in a different direction, then we do that. But this is that time now, we're having that conversation as we look at fiscal year, I guess, going into '25, as to where we would go. But I personally, I think that it's a great advantage to us, and whether or not we use all those benefits at the same time, at some point in time, being able to have those options to us are a benefit, not only to members, but also to our staff. So I don't see any change within the, I wouldn't vote for any change in the budget, and I think that there's benefit.
Ms. Bassin, is your hand up, or is that still from the last question?
Now, my, my hand is up.
Okay, go ahead.
So I didn't, I didn't quite catch the why, just as while I, while you've given me the opportunity to speak. If everyone could just bring their mics a little bit closer, that would help me hear you all. But I didn't quite hear the why, why we're having this discussion. So, so we did approve it in the budget in '24, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so again, I'm not clear on what we're, why we're having this discussion?
Because even though we voted for this in our budget, the dues to the Council of Great City Schools wasn't paid. And so we're having this discussion moving forward with our next school board budget to make it clear that if we pass it in our budget, then we would like to have it used for its intention. Right? That's what I'm understanding. Yes?
So you're asking us to, to agree for the SY, school year '25?
Well, that when the time comes to vote on the budget, whenever we're reviewing it, that we're all on the same page, and since this came up now, I just want to take, spend, I didn't want to spend a lot of time on this, but just to point it out that when we, when we approve it, that it is to be paid as intended.
Yeah.
Yeah. And also to have this discussion about, you know, our membership. I mean, do, is, if, I want to know if anyone's opposed to being members of these organizations.
I think Ms. Bassin's trying to say something.
Go ahead.
Well, I appreciate the discussion, and I would say since we approved the membership, you know, I would say let's, you know, pay that invoice, and I wholly support continuing our membership, especially with the Council of Great City Schools. I think as District Lanten, and I think perhaps Mr. Jordan mentioned, it is probably one of the best opportunities to meet and connect with other urban school districts to ours. And I know for me personally, I've had that experience alone a lot, other school board members, the nation, who are facing similar challenges and also have similar, I mean, you know, successes as well, that I think, where we've also had the opportunity to share our successes. So, and I know historically, we've also gone as a team, you know, with administration and, and our folks, to share what we're doing. So it's a great, it's a great learning opportunity, it's a great sharing opportunity, and so I definitely encourage us to, to continue with that membership. So that's my, that's my vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bassin. Anyone else? Go ahead, Dr. Gabriel.
So I need to see the big picture with regards to our memberships. I know you just mentioned them, VSBA, and with Council of Great City Schools, you said it's $45,000?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would want to.
It's $46,000.
$46,000.
$46.
How much are incoming teachers being paid now, Dr. Burson? Forty-nine?
Fifty.
Okay. I understand the bet, I understand the concern with the opportunities that can exist with the board. I need to have a better understanding before I'm comfortable with us spending that money, the return on investment for Norfolk Public Schools, especially as it pertains to these five goals, which we have just adopted. So I'm not saying I'm against it as we go into this discussion. Certainly, if it was included in the budget last year, pay the bill, move forward, but going forward, if this is within our board's budget, then I think we need to look at our return on investment. If board members are benefiting, which I'm hearing they are, if administration is benefiting and is, is $46,000, you know, a wise investment for our school division, for us, in addition to the other ones that we are members of? So that's, I just would want to get the information, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Martin, if I may, just, I know we heard that amount with Council of Great City Schools, but I appreciate you, Mr. Jordan, in respect of COSPA, there is no membership. There's only, I guess you would say a user fee. If we participate in a conference and so forth, there's a fee there. VSBA is our sex, it was our second one that we have a membership, but we, of course, we use Board Docs, which we're all on right now. That's what you're seeing here on the screen, their Legislative Services, a, there are a lot of different things that we get out of that, of course.
Policy.
State Conference. So that's that one. Then NSBA, of course, still has, and NSBA is almost now set up in the same way as a user fee, if you go and participate in their conferences. So there is no set lump sum you're putting out there, it's as we deem that we use it. And I think that's the only other association that we have. So I think that I would still encourage what Dr. Gabriel was saying in the respective, let's break it down, let's figure out what the value is, not only what's offered, but also I think that on the second half of that, what are we doing as a school, in a, a school board and administration to take advantage of those opportunities in that membership? And are we using the full extent? And also probably, how long we've been a member? I think that this has been in the budget beyond this school board. beyond this school board several years back. And that doesn't mean that we don't take, just like we're doing with goals and so forth, if you revisit those things. But that's, go ahead and look on both sides to make sure that not only we examine the benefits that are being presented to us, but that we're adequately taking advantage of those opportunities to better what we're doing here in our work.
Go ahead.
Just, just, I guess, one, one final comment just in terms of the, the structure and the historical benefits. And you can read some of that for yourselves. But as Mr. Clanton mentioned, the, there's only, I can't take the exact number, but it's like 130, I think, total districts in the, in the entire country that are members. There's criteria. So, Norfolk is a member because we are, it's eligible to be a member initially because we're the largest urban school division in the Commonwealth, in the state. We, it's, it's enrollment based, but we've been grandfathered in as a result of that. But part of what is underneath all of this, beyond just the board work, so the council has a structure in terms of the board and their governance where it serves the board and the superintendent, the board and the administration. So, within the council services, there are conferences for human resources, conferences for chief operating officers. They are, like, I forgot the terminology that they use, but they bring together chief operating officers, financial officers, and others to collaborate on best practices. There are key performance indicators that, that come out that allow Norfolk to see how we are performing against the other large school districts in the, in the country. So, it's a lot more value beyond what we may be doing as a board in terms of going to conferences that also benefits or could benefit the operational side and the administration side of the, of the House as well.
Thank you. Ms. Bassin, did you still have your hand up?
Yes, I did.
Okay, go ahead.
And just to add on to what Mr. Jordan, Mr. Jordan and Mr. Clanton just said, and to put a dollar amount to it. And the most, I'm just doing a quick search of my files. And the latest report that I received, that we received back as the board from the Council of Great City Schools in terms of our return, return of, return on investment of our membership dues. Norfolk's return on investment, and this is for 2020, '21, $65 returned for each $1 paid in dues. So, just to give you, Dr. Gabriel, just a sense of, you know, what we get in return. And I'm going to forward this report to the full board to tell, it tells you, you know, what the full benefits and services are so that you can see what, what we've been getting from our membership through the council. So, that might put, give a, a better perspective of what we're truly getting. But like I think Mr. Jordan and Mr. Clanton said, you know, are we, are we maximizing our capacity to sort of utilize what they have to offer? And that's, you know, I think on us to, to take that on.
All right, thanks, Ms. Bassin. All right, we're going to have the opportunity to have this discussion in more detail once we dive into the school board's budget. So, for the sake of time, I want to move forward to what's really important, which is student excellence. Dr. Pol, please take the lectern. And as is listed on our monitoring calendar, it is November, so we get STAR's data. Go ahead and start when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair Ms. Buffalo, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong. This afternoon, I'll be presenting on STAR data with a focus on Board Goals 2, 3, and 4. Beginning with the reading data. As seen on the reading participation slide, all grade levels this year were above 94% and only two areas were below 90%. There were within grade eight, and they were the Students with Disabilities subgroup and the English Learners subgroup. And they were just slightly below 90%. This slide shows the trend data by grade level for students in each of the four core bands, at or above benchmark and on watch, which combined, you know, makes our proficiency band. Intervention needed and urgent intervention needed. Growth was realized when comparing to last fall's data in grades 2, 3, 4, and 6 with student proficiency, the combination of at or above and on watch. However, there were also increases in the urgent intervention band for grades 3, 5, 6, 7, and 8. Although grade 3 through 8 combined data declined for several subgroups between '21, '22, and '22, '23, we noticed that grade 5 was the big driver of this work. When looking at division-wide results, grade 5 declined by six percentage points when looking at proficiency. Most other grade levels either minimally declined or showed improvement. These two tables show the actual fall data in comparison to the targets for both Board Goals 2 and 3. And as a reminder, these targets were set when developing the interim measures for the goals initially. For Goal 2, students reading on grade level by the end of third grade, the proficiency mark was slightly below target by 2.4% and the urgent intervention was below the target by 4.9%. For Goal 3, focusing on reading for all students in the black subgroup, data shows students to be slightly below target for proficiency by 2.2% and below target for urgent intervention by 2.1%. This table shows the data for the STAR reading portion of Goal 4. As a reminder, targets were not set during the development of the interim measures for Goal 4 as these were developed later than Goals 2 and 3 when data was nearly available for the far, fall STAR testing window. Therefore, this data is setting the benchmark for this year. And as can be seen on the uploaded tables for Goal 4, the winter targets have been established based on fall results in order to meet the established spring targets. When comparing the fall proficiency results to last year's spring results, there were increases in the gaps in all subgroups except for students with disabilities. Additionally, the gap with Hispanic and non-Hispanic still remains below 10%. And this slide shows the trend data over three years with line graph for subgroup, by subgroup for proficiency scores over the past three years. The red lines are the subgroup and the blue lines represent students not in the subgroup. The only graph that varies is the one comparing our black subgroup and our white subgroup results, where the black subgroup is the red line and the white subgroup is the blue line. Here is the same data set with the urgent intervention subgroup, data, rather. The gap between the black and white subgroups was the only one to show improvement and has nearly hit the spring target with the fall assessment data. The SES with non-SES data showed a considerable increase due to a large improvement for the non-SES subgroup. So, the gap grew because one subgroup grew much more than anticipated with the fall results. Additionally, the Hispanic subgroup remained below a 10% gap when compared to the non-Hispanic subgroup. And here are the line graphs for the urgent intervention gaps. Similarly, with the other ones, there are three-year trend data. Now, let's turn our attention to our mathematics data. As with the reading data levels, all grade levels had above a 90% participation rate, showing improvement from last year's participation data. There are a few subgroups within grades 2, 6, and 7, and 8 that were just below 90% that are noted in the red font. And here is the math data by grade level and score bands. There were improvements in proficiency, which combines the at or above range with the on-watch range for all grade levels when compared to last year's fall data. So, I want to repeat that one more time. There were improvements in proficiency, which combines the at or above range with the on-watch for all grade levels when compared to last year's fall data. However, grades 5, 6, 7, and 8 also saw increases with the urgent intervention score band. So, we kind of squeezed that yellow zone a little bit in those grade levels. Looking at Board Goal 4 with mathematics proficiency rates, gaps decreased compared to spring results for the black and white subgroups as well as for the Hispanic and non-Hispanic subgroups. Both groups have nearly met or exceeded the spring gap targets already. As a reminder, the fall results are baseline and were used to set winter targets for STAR gaps in performance. Here are the proficiency gaps by subgroup laid out in the same fashion as the reading results. Sorry, I didn't click on time on that one. And then, here's the same information for the urgent intervention data. And the only gap group to decrease from the spring data was the black and white subgroups. Notice the SES to non-SES gap that has grown significantly from the spring. And this, again, is due to strong performance of the non-SES subgroup. And here's the trend data for urgent intervention by subgroup over the past three years. Now, I'd like to finish out with some areas of highlight. Grades 2 and 4 showed improvements compared to last fall in reading for both being proficient and with urgent intervention. So, they're moving all the way in the right direction. Grades 7 and 8 showed improvements when compared to last fall in reading for being proficient. Grades 2 and 3 showed improvements compared to last fall in mathematics for both being proficient and with urgent intervention. Grade 4 showed improvements with urgent intervention in mathematics compared to last fall. Grades 6, 7, and 8 showed improvements with being proficient in mathematics compared to last fall. And 25 out of 37 schools were at or above the target for the subgroup of black students for being proficient on STAR reading. And division-wide, grades 2 through 6 were within five percentage points of, or above the target for STAR reading with the black subgroup. And now, turning our attention to some areas of opportunity and growth for us. The data shows that grades 3, 6, and 8 saw increases in the students in the urgent intervention range in reading. Grade 5 saw declines with proficiency and increases in urgent intervention in reading, as stated early in the presentation. The majority of schools did not meet the fall target for third grade STAR reading assessment. Grade 6, or sorry, grades 7 and 8 were more than five percentage points below the targets for both proficiency and urgent intervention levels on STAR reading for students in the black subgroup. And grades 6, 7, and 8 saw increases in the number of students in the urgent intervention range for mathematics, which leads us to next steps or implications of the data. Excuse me. So, midstream, we're looking at amending the elementary schedule in grades 3 through 5 to include a set 30-minute per day dedicated to small group tutoring, focused on both reading and mathematics. Adding tutors to both the elementary and middle school levels for targeted support in both reading and mathematics. Continued professional development for teachers and building-level administrators on the use of formative assessment data to drive small group instruction. And increased instructional walkthroughs focused on alignment of lessons and teaching to the curriculum and standards. And finally, an increased focus for reading support in grades 5, 7, and 8, where we saw the biggest needs data-wise. Within Board Docs, there were specific documents uploaded to support data review for Board Goals. There's a document for each of the Goals 2, 3, and 4 with STAR data. I'll just click through those. Within each table for Goals 2 and 3, scores were shaded green if they met or exceeded the pre-established target in a positive direction. So, where you see green, that's good, right? The green, yellow, red, I think we're familiar with that now. They're yellow if they're within five percentage points of the target and red if they're beyond five percentage points or more of the target. This data is broken down with division-level data and by school data. With the Goal 4 data, it's a little bit different. Since targets were not pre-established, the division-level data is setting the benchmark. So, although it looks like every gap group within division-level data is green, it's just, that's our, our starting point right now. What is, what is interesting to look into the data with is the school-level data. If it's at or above the division level in a positive manner, then it's green. So, if they, they're at that gap group or better, then they're, they're in a green position. It's yellow if it's within five percentage points and it's red if it's more than 5% away from the gap of where the division fell with the fall area. And then, again, we use the fall benchmark to set the winter targets to make the spring because we did preset the spring targets as the goal was created. So, those are already set and, and we're focusing on those. Additionally, if you're looking at the document closely and you notice a school that might have a missing subgroup, that just tells us there weren't enough students to report the data publicly. And that's a rare occurrence on that, on that sheet. And then, finally, as has been reported in the past, just for your knowledge, the STAR data by school's been included with a comparison of data from last fall's test administration and students being proficient, which is the combined at or above and on watch or with students needing urgent intervention. If the data is green, there was improvement from last fall. And if it's red, there was a decline in performance compared to last fall. And the final document is the STAR performance by grade level, which is the multitude of all the, all the STAR graphs provided that also give you the demographics within each grade level, similar to what's been shared within the presentation in previous years. So, that's the presentation. And I'm happy to answer any questions or review the three-goal documents, whatever the board prefers.
Thank you. Go to Dr. Gabriel.
Thank you, Dr. Pol. I appreciate seeing the results and I appreciate the transparency and honesty that you have with the results that we have. And I'm glad that we're looking at them and I'm glad that we're following them. And it's good to hear the interventions, specifically the tutoring that you guys are going to be working towards. I have a suggestion slash request for the reports that you've attached onto Board Docs, which I greatly appreciate. Can, can the reports just be labeled page number? So, report, page 1, page 2, page 3, the date on the report? And can every report have a legend for what the color coding means? I interpret green as good and red as maybe not. But I just think that as I was going through past reports with different shades, it's just, just always include a legend on there[1538.58] it's just, just always include a legend on there with what the color coding means, and that would be wonderful.
No problem. I appreciate the feedback.
Ms. Bassin, go ahead. Ms. Bassin?
Thank you. I couldn't hear you, sorry. All right. So I just had a, had a couple of questions. So what do you attribute the declines in proficiency in the fifth grade in particular that you talked about in one of the earlier slides? And I'm sorry, I'm getting feedback, so I'm trying to, I'm talking slowly for that reason, because I can hear my voice twice. I don't know if you can, but...
You sound very clear on this end.
Okay.
So go ahead.
Do you want me to respond to that one first, Ms. Bassin?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I think there's a couple of things. One, summer slide, but two, if you look at our, our fifth graders, and, and as much as I don't, I'm trying to stay away from going back to COVID and, and online instruction, but our fifth graders were at a very formative time of reading instruction when we were, when we weren't in-person for learning. And I think there's still a struggle with our fifth grade, and it, it's exciting to watch the lower-grade levels growing. But, you know, with the fifth grade, I think there was some summer slide and just the, the challenge that they faced with the, the direct reading instruction they missed with COVID.
Okay. So, so you mentioned the summer slide, and so that's the next question that I have is, what impact, what impact, if any, did you find our summer school program had on our student outcomes? I mean, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that yet, but I was kind of curious what, what you found. And one of the reasons for that is I was also looking at, you know, the cohort data, looking at second grade to third grade, fourth grade, and some areas, you know, saw that improvement. So I was wondering, you know, if you could speak to that a little bit.
So the, the summer slide and the summer school data, so it's, it's nearly finalized. It's almost, I, I sent them back to the drawing board on a, on a few small things. We noticed that there was, in general, less summer slide in mathematics for students who went to summer programming with the reading. It, it was still about level. So I've asked them to do another comparison with a different group, where we're looking at students who had similar spring SOL scores, who did not go to summer school versus the ones who did, so we can compare it in a different way. But we have noticed generally with mathematics, there was less summer slide with students who had gone to summer programming. And with reading, it still seemed about level with our summer programming. So if it comes out level again, then what we do is we reevaluate, how we're doing read instruction in the summertime, so that we can show improvements next summer.
Okay, all right, great. And then, and I'll, I'll come back, you can come back to me. I'm gonna let everybody else talk, and then I have a couple other questions, but I'll hold on that.
Okay.
Someone has a chance to talk.
Go ahead, Mr. Clayton.
So as a follow-up to Ms. Bassin's question regarding the summer enrichment program that we have, I know that all of us here know that that was heavily funded with the federal dollars that we received. And I'm quite sure that we're preparing for that, and, and it's good to figure out what the return was, but then also, as we're facing summers, you know, summer enrichment opportunities again, are we looking at something as robust as that, and we preparing for that in the budget? I don't, you're...
So we have, we have one more year of ESSR.
Okay.
So this summer, we're good, because we have till September 2024, and we've budgeted for this summer in our ESSR funds.
Right, so, but if I've heard correctly, you're still compiling the data so that we can see what the result, okay, correct.
Anyone else before I turn it over to Ms. Bassin again?
Yes, but at the end.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Bassin.
Oh, really?
Mr. Jordan yielded the floor to you.
Oh, okay. So, and I guess this is more, oh, I'm sorry, what was that?
Go ahead.
Okay, this is more for the board and, you know... So one is like our, our definition too of proficiency. So we have the proficiency and the on-watch together in our goal. And so, Dr. Poehl, Dr. Burnsong, if you could talk a little bit more about how that is defined, or at least tell us a little bit more about the on-watch group? And is the, are those students that is in the on-watch group, are they in fact on grade level, or are they... Can you, what, what is the definition of on-watch?
So our on-watch students still have a, a strong percentage of being successful on the SOL test. However, through the year, we need to watch them. They're, at the, at the time of the test, with the knowledge that they've shown, the, the data says they don't need intensive tutoring, they don't need to be in a pull-out program. We just need to watch them through the year and watch their skill base and make sure they progress. So if an on-watch student from the fall to the winter drops down to intervention, then we know they're going in the wrong direction, and we need to have more intensive services. But it's just what it says, they're on watch for the teacher. The at or above students, we know that, that we're pushing and pushing further because they're, they're our highest achievers. On-watch, they're, they're on watch for the teachers to make sure they don't fall below the bubble.
Okay, but they have been, they have hit proficiency, though.
They're, they're at the proficiency line. So, you know, and when, when we're looking at this again, when we're using it as, as with, with the data through the year, they're, they're right at that line. So I, I don't want to say they're fully proficient, but yes, they're, they're proficient students is, is, on the score. But if we don't watch them and we don't, you know, keep them on our watch list, then we could run into danger territory, which is why they're labeled as on-watch. But that, that creates that proficiency band of students so that we can focus on our intervention and urgent intervention students with the tutoring that's needed through the year.
Okay. Well, one of, one of the things I guess for our board to kind of think about, and I know Mr. Bassin is, you know, is working or walking the boards through the goal process and practicing, like, you know, are these, are our goals right where we want them to be and all of that? Is there really being clear, are, are, are definitions really where we want them to be? And when you look at the proficiency with or without the on-watch, there's a big difference in the percentage of students that are in the, the group. So I think it's without looking, since I'm, I'm looking at all, it's, I think, in the... Let me see, like, it's like fifty-six percent, or fifty-point-six percent versus if you just looked at at or above grade level, I think it's thirty-six percent. So, I mean, that's a big difference. So when we're talking about at or, looking at proficiency at or above grade level, I think we have to be clear in what we want our goal to reflect, especially when we're talking about high expectations, but at the same time being realistic. So I'm just putting that out there as something for everyone to consider.
So if I, if I may, Ms. Bassin, real quick, I, I just, my understanding is that these are interim measures for administration to make sure that we're gonna, we're reaching the goal, the board's goals. And administratively, we know if we're looking at this band of students that we've identified as proficiency, if, if we continue to grow the proficient band, then the goal will be met, you know? So we're, we're focusing on urgent intervention to make sure the students who really need the most intervention, that we're able to move them up, because it's, remember, this is also a long-term goal. So focusing on this, this band of students that, that we've identified as proficiency, which are the on-watch or at or above, if we continue to focus on this data and, and that band continues to grow, we're confident administratively that we'll continue to, to meet the yearly, annual benchmarks and the goal, the way we've set up interim measures.
Right, because our goal right now doesn't include that on-watch in the definition. So the interims do. That's why I was just making sure that there was that alignment and that shared understanding with, with my board colleagues, with all, with the, with almost all the board members.
Right, and I'm sorry, my understanding, the goal is just focused on SOL data, so it wouldn't include that, that band, it would just include the SOL data.
Correct, correct, right, right, right. Definitely. And the other question along those lines is the through, the through data, the SOL through data. And this is a question for the, the board also, is how that might be examined along with the star data? Yeah. That was a question that came up as well, and especially last year, as I believe you had talked about possibly doing away with the star data, and this was just all kind of coming back to me as we were, you know, looking at these reports again. And, and obviously, if these are interim measures, that, that wouldn't happen, right? We would continue to use and look at and examine the star data. So I was just wondering what role the SOL through data would have with our monitoring, in our monitoring.
I'd like to start with the answer to that. In the past, the reporting of that data had been inconsistent, and we need data that we can consistently monitor. We can monitor our star results. We can monitor and control administration. We can monitor and control how we put the data together. We cannot do that with through data. That comes from the state, and so we initially thought that we would do away with our star assessments, but then we did not feel comfortable with that because we would not have anything that we could fall back on and have something consistent that we can use, could use throughout the year. So that's why we landed on continuing with the star data. And as you know, we have lots of trend data related to our, our star assessments, and that's not the case with the through assessments.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, I appreciate that response, because, you know, as we get feedback from community members and the school communities, and they talk about, you know, the method of assessments that, you know, we, our students go through, that, that's often, sometimes we're reminded of tasks for meeting conversations, and that was one of them that had come up. So I appreciate that, that clarification and that perspective, so thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any more questions, Mr. Jordan?
I don't have, I don't know if I have questions or not. I think part of, part of the reason that, that we agreed to have goals and, and focus is so that as a board, we can be clear as to whether or not there's alignment between the goals that we've established and the progress that our students are, are making. And, you know, I mentioned earlier, I think that, like, we, what we just went through, which I think is good information, I don't think it get, I don't think the board can really focus on three goals at one time and multiple, multiple interim measures at the same time, and just being able to simply know, are we on target? Are we off-target? If we're off-target, what do we need to do to get on-target? What, what things are we doing well? And so my, my perspective and my recommendation is, is that if we want to be effective at goal monitoring, then we need to pick a goal, state what the goal is, be clear on what interim measure or goal that we're having a conversation around, and then have a conversation around that goal, and being able to be clear, like, in, in the winter, if we're looking at something three times a year, like star data, so are we, are we on-target? And then we come to, well, I guess fall, and then we come to winter, we can monitor and we can see whether or not we've, are making the growth progress from one quarter to the next, or one evaluation period to the next. And in the board, be able to have a good understanding of, are we making progress and are we on track to the goals? So I just want to request again that for our next session, when we deal with goal monitoring, that we can break this down, take a goal, take two or three of the interim goals, being able to see the progress that we're making and really have a conversation, one goal at a time, with the interims associated with that goal at a time, and being able to have our discussion around that. So like, today, we've received information on goal two, goal three, goal four, star data. We, there's other data in there that was presented that we started having conversations around fifth grade, whereas fifth grade is not something that we said we were going to prioritize and target. And so if we're going to be effective at our goal monitoring, which also helps us to determine the success that the division as a whole is, is having, we really need to be focused and, and disciplined and have our reports written at the sixth-grade level and clear with, with, with charts that, that we can all follow. Otherwise, what I fear we're going to end up doing, and what I kind of feel like we are doing now, is we have layered on goals, we've layered on non-negotiables, we've layered on progress monitoring on top of the reports and some of the conversations that we're having before. And I, I'll speak for myself, I know, leaving here today, I could not tell you whether, whether or not we made progress based upon the interim measures and interim goals that, that have been established, whether or not we're moving forward or not, what it looks like, what we're doing well, and what we're going to do next. Because my brain can't sift through three and four different things, and then when you add in interim goals, six to eight things, all at the same time. And so as a board and as a team, I think we need to try to see if we can change our behavior so that we can really be focused and be clear about whether or not we're, we're, we're making progress towards the overarching goals that we set and the interim goals that are supposed to be predictive, as Dr. Poehl was just saying. If the, with the star data, if the students that are on watches decreasing at, at the same time, the students who are proficient are increasing, and the students who are urgent are decreasing, we just should be able to clearly see that. And, and lastly, to that point where Ms. Bassin was asking the question about what does on-watch mean, I think what we're trying to determine is, while we have the SOL test, we're really trying to determine is whether or not our students are on, in third grade, are reading on grade level. And one means by which we are determining that based upon the expertise we've received is looking at the star piece. So it, as a parent, it would make me uncomfortable if I'm trying to determine, is my child reading on grade level in the first quarter or during this piece? And saying, well, yeah, maybe, maybe she is, maybe she isn't, because she's in the, the light blue band, but she's not above the green band. I just think at the board level or at the parent level, we just need to be clear. Child on grade, children on grade level, children aren't on grade level. Children needing intervention, children not needing intervention. But as, as has been mentioned, at the administrative level, you all really are using the, the understanding of if children are on watch, what you're doing to get more students in the green. And so you may, in your presentation to us, talk about some of the things that you are doing, because whatever it is, third-grade star, not including the, the children in the, in the blue on watch. If we currently have about thirty-eight percent of our students reading on grade level per this first star assessment, then the conversation we can have is, what is it that we're anticipating it to be for the next cycle? And are we on-target? Is thirty-eight percent what we anticipated? If it is, and we're ahead, then let's celebrate and figure out what we're going to do, keep it moving. If it's on-target, then we know we'll stay where we are and keep the momentum going. But if we're behind the target, then what are we going to do differently? What support should we need from us? And I think that's the level of the conversation we need to be able to have as a board for each goal that we're monitoring and each interim goal that we are looking at as part of, as part of that cycle. I would just like for us to figure out, can we, can we do that before we end up being halfway through the year? And, and, and off-track and off-cycle and not being comfortable between the alignment of the goals that we've set in our role as board members and the progress that we're trying to monitor in terms of whether or not our students are growing towards the, the goals that we've set and the annual target that we have for this year, realizing that our ultimate target is over a three- to five-year period. That's, that's really to the board, not, I think we have to do that. And, and what we need, the support from administration is to help the board have those types of progress monitoring reports so that we can do our job more effectively and not get pulled into trying to do your job. And I think that's where we have agreed, we're trying to get disciplined about. So the board is doing the board's work, and administration is doing the administration work, and if, and the questions that we're asking are, are focused in, in that way.
Sure, I'll, I'll respond to that. So I, I think we're, we're still working towards making sure that you have all the data that you need, because we don't want that to be the narrative, that you don't get the data that, that you need to make informed decisions. And so, so for us, we're trying to work on streamlining the data. We will better streamline the reports. I, I think we can tighten some things up. And having these conversations help, of course, because we know what your expectations are. But for us, we'd rather give you more than not enough, because we certainly don't want to give the impression that we're not giving you information so that you can do your jobs or can't do your jobs. So finding that fine line between too much data, making it simple enough so that a sixth grader could interpret it, you know? We're, we're working towards that, and I, I do think we can get better. We'll, we'll continue to work in that area.
Just, just to that point, I would, I'm just speaking as an individual board member, but I would ask that you, that we all find ways of letting go of our... But I would ask that you, that we all find ways of letting go of our trauma from the past. And that we, we've gone through this process, uh, where we set goals. You all have spent a lot of time, energy on giving us interim goals.
Absolutely.
Give us what we need based upon what we have agreed to do. And, and there's no reason for us, un- unless we're monitoring something like the school by school data. Uh, I don't see anything in the interim goals right now that mention us monitoring that school by school data. So we should mean, we shouldn't be in a position where I appreciate the effort. But don't draw us into talking about something that's going to pull us away from the focus and draw us into, um, spending time asking you questions about things that will also pull your focus away. And so, like I say, this is the first time and I think we have to continue to practice of it. But I don't want, for me, you all to feel worried about not, if, if we think we need more, we'll ask for it. But I think we need to ask for it in a productive way tied to the goals that the board has said we're going to monitor. And if we ask for things that are outside of that, then we have to be able to hold ourselves accountable and say, that is not what we said we're going to monitor at this time. And the response has to be no, or we will send that request as Dr. Gabriel said earlier, you know, appropriately. But we've got to change our behavior. Otherwise, we're not going to do what I know we all agree we want to do on behalf of our students.
And I agree with that, Mr. Jordan. And, and I think, um, what, what can we do as a governance team? Because we end up fielding a lot of questions that are not focused on our goals, that do take us away, um, from focusing on the goals, multiple questions. So how are we going to hold ourselves accountable for getting off track?
Uh, the board will spend no less than fifty percent of its meeting time monitoring progress on student goals. The board will not operate without an annual self-evaluation to assess strengths and areas of improvement and a plan for professional development as needed. The board will not interfere in the day-to-day operations of the school division. The board will not support policies and recommendations that perpetuate racial and educational inequities, as well as those that attempt to marginalize or discriminate groups of students based on a disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, or sexual, sexual orientation. The board will, will not fulfill its duties without engaging the community in representing the values of the community they serve, particularly of our ESL families. Those are the non-negotiables that, uh, that we agreed to and the board should be held accountable to that.
So, Mr. Jordan, when I violate a non-negotiable, there's seven of you who are going to tell me about that.
No, we should be speaking as one, not seven.
Well, you know what I mean when I say that. So what's going to happen when one of your colleagues violates that?
Uh, we, we're going to check each other and the board chair is going to help check us too. That's, that's the behavioral change that we agreed we're going to make. So either we're going to make it or we're not.
And, and we need to make it and when we're, when we're, when we're out of bounds, we need to call it. And we need to be big enough to say, we're out of bounds. Yes, we really, 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 really want this information, but it doesn't deal with the goals. And so, guess what? Parking lot until we revisit the goals. And, and, and if we cannot stick to that formula, then we are not following our own recommendations of what we've said to do. So we have to honor our commitment, you guys honor your commitment, and at the end, we assess, did honoring the commitments yield an increased student outcomes?
Which is why we evaluate ourselves. The board should be evaluating itself quarterly. We should be looking at how we performed at our meetings. And that is an opportunity for us in a transparent way to say whether or not we are living up to the goals that we've established for ourselves and for the district as a whole, with the, with the expectation is we're here in the boardroom setting the example of what should be cascading throughout the district as a whole.
I agree.
But if we're all over the place and if we're confused and we don't know what we're looking at and we're asking for things that aren't needed, then we set the model for when you all go into the building for, for, for that as well. And that's the behavior change that we're trying to make. It's not going to happen overnight, but if we don't practice it, uh, I promise you, if you keep feeding me bread, it's going to have an impact. Don't feed me the bread.
But I will say, and not to labor this, that we shouldn't get it misconstrued that asking questions for clarity in a meeting or work session for understanding, it's fine. Now, asking for additional things for the administration to come back and reports and all those other stuff, that's what we're trying to rein in so that you all are continuing to add the things in there. But clarity and using our time wisely in the meetings and, and asking those questions and even beforehand, the work that we do during the meeting, after the meeting, and in preparation for the meeting should be the mantra that we're also holding ourselves accountable for.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton.
And I can appreciate that because I think a lot of the questions that maybe an individual board member may have, if we can get those in advance. And certainly there are some questions you want to, um, pose during the meetings for, um, various reasons. But we would also appreciate that because some, a lot of questions can be answered before we even get here.
Say it, you say it, no, you say it.
That this is why we're pushing to, if we have the monitoring calendar, we know what's coming up. It gives plenty of time for the administration to prepare so that we have plenty of time for the board agenda and the documents to be placed out there. So we almost have a week to two weeks for those necessary questions to come in and plenty of time to fill them in. So then really when we're coming in here, it shouldn't be a whole lot of extra things other than tweaking and clarifying. So as we move towards that and some of these operational things, it'll make us more efficient all the way around.
And going back to the calendar, because we'll know ahead of time what's upcoming. And I know Mr. Clanton and I spoken recently because if you remember, we all had tasks from the Valbrand group. And one of our tasks was around, how soon do we get reports in advance? So a monitoring report, and you all know when the data is available, you know, if, and I'm just making it up, let's just say that we're monitoring, uh, black students, third grade, reading whatever on grade level. You may have all that now. If we know that in January we're going to monitor it, there's no reason two to, two weeks prior to that, that we can't get that information, which then allows us to review it. And if we do have some questions, to provide those questions ahead of time. But if we wait till the Friday before or whatever, it, we, we have to, all those things we have, we have to work on.
Cultural shift.
Right. And if we know, we can plan for that.
Yes.
Yeah. And it can't be these last minute kind of, we want this and make sure it's posted by four-thirty on Friday, so.
Because watch, now we're going to, now we're going to have a conversation about the equity report. And watch what happens.
Well, first, Ms. Basine has been waiting patiently.
Um, thank you. And actually, um, some of the, the questions, comments that were just raised were, um, ones that I was also going to raise about, you know, that we should still have opportunity for clarifying questions and, um, information and being able to distinguish the difference between data and clarifying information and, and questions. Um, but the other piece, and I, I'm really glad we're having this conversation. Um, but if there is data that is readily available that is connected to the data that we've received, I think, you know, that's the conversation, um, or, or, you know, a board, a conversation that, that, um, we've had in the past about, you know, can a, can a board member receive that information? Or should be able to receive that information if it's readily available? Um, versus having the administration try to analyze and provide a big report and a lot of time trying to put a report together, which is certainly not what we want to pull the administration, um, uh, away from the work that they're doing, uh, to do for a board member. Um, so, um, I think that, uh, we have to, uh, you know, still provide those opportunities, uh, to, to allow for that information be shared with board members when requested.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Basine. I, we'll close this question out, or this conversation out. I think we've, thank you all for your comments. Um, and, uh, up next we have the annual equity report and I've allotted about twenty minutes for that. I hope that's enough.
Not for me.
Okay, good.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Martin, Vice Chairman, Ms. Buffalo, Members of the Board, Dr. Birdsong. This afternoon, I'm going to transition now to presenting information on the annual equity report that's included in policy DAB, which focuses on equity. The presentation will focus on the policy requirements, an overview of division-level data and information on how the school-level reports are formatted. Uh, Norfolk Public Schools' policy on equity, DAB, has a requirement for an annual equity report to the board that includes student enrollment at each school disaggregated by race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, English language learners, special education, and identified gifted. Student average daily attendance data for each school, student achievement data at each school disaggregated by race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, English learners, special education, and gifted. Student suspension and date, and discipline data for each school, the amount of federal funding allocated at each school, the annual funding allocated at each school outside of federal funding, and the number of highly qualified teachers at each school as defined by the VDOE, and the number of highly effective teachers and the experience level of teachers at each school, as well as the teacher retention rate at each school. And that's outlined in your policy. The enrollment data provided for the three years is from the Fall State Report each year, and it includes pre-kindergarten and post-grad. As seen on this slide, the enrollment has declined over the past three years, with the racial breakdown remaining relatively consistent with no subgroups seeing change of one percent or greater from the previous school year. This slide contains data on the student average, uh, attendance averages for three years and as seen in the data, attendance rates improved for all subgroups from school year twenty-two to school year twenty-three. As the student achievement data has been presented to the board, STAR, PALS, and SOLs, um, this is all previous year's data. The next few slides are simply an overview of what data is included in the report. English reading SOL data is provided at all levels for the division report and all the SOL data from the annual pass rates is reported by the VDOE. Since the SOL reports from the VDOE did not include gifted students, this group is, uh, and this part of the dataset is locally calculated throughout the report. The mathematics SOL data is also provided as well as the science, um, s- uh, uh, science data. Uh, PALS data is provided for kindergarten in grade one. Grade two is not included since the STAR assessment starts in second grade. And then STAR mathematics is included for grades three through eight, as well as STAR reading for grades three through eight. Our grade level promotion is reported for all grade levels on the division report. This is reported by the number of students and the percentage of students in each group. Grade nine continues to have the lowest promotion rate. However, there was a seven-point-seven percentage point improvement from school year twenty-two to school year twenty-three. The next dataset being reported is the annual student discipline data. The numbers are the number of incidents and the percentages are the percentage of that group that received the discipline. There was a slight decrease in the number of students receiving ISS and the following subgroup had decreases, um, in their percentage, which is the black subgroup are two or more and our gifted subgroup. Short-term suspensions or out-of-school suspensions less than ten days. And although, although there is an increase in short-term suspensions from school year twenty-two to school year twenty-three, the black and gifted subgroups saw declines in the percentages of that group receiving short-term suspensions. The final part of the discipline data is on the long-term suspensions. Again, there were increases in long-term suspensions with declines in percentages for black, Hispanic, and the multiracial subgroups. This slide gives you an overview of the annual budget details over the past three years for the, um, uh, operations and grant funds for the past three years. The funds include textbook funds, but not capital improvement project funding. And the final pieces of data relate to teacher data. The highly qualified data is from the state IPAL report. And the highly effective teacher data includes any teacher that is not on a plan for growth or performance improvement plan. And the teacher experience data is reported in bands of zero to three years, four to ten years, eleven to twenty years, and twenty-one-plus years of consecutive years of employment with Norfolk Public Schools. The final piece of data relates to teacher retention, which is the percent of classroom and non-classroom, um, teachers who re- play, remain employed through, uh, June thirtieth of the given year. The individual school reports are laid out identically to the division report with a side-by-side comparison of the division and the school data to make it easy to see the comparison with school by school. And, uh, finally, as outlined in the, um, recommendations of the equity review conducted by Fourpoint, um, this year has been, um, there's been a connection, uh, to key initiatives in professional development, which was a recommendation, uh, from the beginning of the year. There were three areas of focus around literacy, accountability, and attendance. Um, and there's been consistent focus on ensuring professional development for teachers, as well as administrators, um, that's connected to classroom data around the three focus areas. Uh, additionally, the sessions with school-level administration focus on what teachers receive with professional development and to focus on the accountability piece of implementing the professional development within the classroom. This year was, uh, there was a pilot program coming into this year, Ignite, that provided stipends for teachers to teach at a traditionally understaffed school. And there's an implementation of a cultural competent instructional, instructional professional development act, um, with division-level leaders, as well as, uh, school staff on a train, the trainer model. And we are in our third year of the implementation in professional development on a consistent coaching framework for, uh, building-level, um, leaders. Um, data meetings have also been redesigned to provide focus on instruction and feedback that matches the student data. And a division-wide cultural competency committee is being cremated, uh, created to sustain the equity work across the division. Um, thanks for allowing me to, uh, present the data. And if you have questions, I might be able to answer them.
Okay. Thank you very much. Who wants to go first? Oh, Mr. Clanton?
Um, thank you, Dr. Poe. I was looking at the presentation. I know that we also, um, received the, the school by school. I'll be perfectly honest, you know, we, uh, get this report and then we see at the high level um, of what the, uh, equity, uh, policy is. But hearing the report that we got, um, in the fall kind of prompted me to go back and look at that and particularly look at, um, that we have established goals. Um, and I know that you mentioned some of those, um, because one of the questions I had about was, well, how do we determine the highly qualified, um, highly effective teachers? Um, and you explained that it came from the state. But there's some other things that are in it and I may have missed it. Um, goal, um, E talks about that each one of the schools has an active functioning PTA. Was that in the school reports?
That, that, we have not reported that on the equity report. A- as far as from the listing on the policy, it hasn't been a part of the equity report for the PTAs.
Okay.
It, it is, however, in our strategic plan, as you well know.
Yeah, in, in strategic plan, but we still have it in the policy. Um, and then the mobile units, I know that that's one of the items that's also listed as a goal, um, in here. But one of the things that I, I, there's a couple. In other words, there's some goals that I just want to review and make sure that it's a policy, is it still part of the practice of what we're doing and what we, because this policy, I think, was adopted back in, what, twenty-fifteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Um, if those are still meeting what we need. The other big thing that kind of jumped out at me was that there is a equity task force. And it, we're specific about who's supposed to be on that equity task force, terms and so forth. Um, is that task force active?
Not that I'm aware of.
So I guess one of the major functions of said task force is to ensure that the division is carrying out what we said in the policy and for there to be an independent group of both internal and external stakeholders to ensure that we're holding ourselves accountable. Would that be a fair assessment?
I would suppose, yes.
Okay.
Provide feedback.
And provide feedback.
Really feedback. It's grassroots feedback, too.
In other words, saying, yeah, we don't see this, we might want to take a look at that. Um, and that kind of just brings it back around because, I mean, we had an, that's our internal, that's the thing that we did in the policy. But then the board in itself decided that we wanted to have an equity audit. Um, and so we had, um, the report, um, that was brought back to us and that there were recommendations and that, that report was actually given to us with the recommendations. Um, that still stood a question around whether or not we got those in time, um, that could have propelled some things and some decisions that the board would have made. My only thing taken out of this is that I appreciate the information. It has given us a picture and a glimpse of where we're going. But as we kind of look back at this and if we're saying it and we put it in our, on our goals and so forth, that we need to probably look back at this policy, one, to make sure that we're truly carrying out what the policy intended for it to be. Um, twenty-sixteen, twenty-twenty-three, about going into twenty-twenty-four, it's probably a fair time that we need to review it. Um, and as you've stated, if we're not using the task force, does that need to be, uh, reviewed to ensure that we're, we're holding ourselves accountable for it? Um, and then that helps us to hold, as a board accountable and administration, that we're elevating this to the level for which it's supposed to be, particularly if we place it in policy. So I appreciate the information, but it, it's opening up a light to me that this is something from a board perspective and from the policy perspective that we probably need to look at again.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. Ms. Basine?
Thank you, Dr. Poe. Uh, I just wanted to share my support for- Uh, I just wanted to share my support for what Mr. Clanton just, uh, stated. I, I fully agree, uh, with what he said. Um, I also want to piggyback on that and say, um, again, this is, I think, an area policy, we do our work around, um, non-negotiables, that I see some real focus that could be, um, put here in terms of our progress, uh, in terms of our monitoring. So, um, just, I just wanted to comment there, uh, for, for thought and consideration. So, um, anyway, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else?
Can we bring this to the policy committee? Can, can this policy kind of get elevated for the policy committee to review? Because I have a couple of thoughts, and I can just email it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think if we, we open it up to, to get feedback from the board and, and bring it back there, and then that way, we can at least start working with the administration to bring back something that we can then look at with recommendations, rather than just kind of all going at it at one time and hoping.
Yeah. Okay. Does anyone object?
I, I don't have an objection, I just think that it goes back to, uh, what, what Ms. Basine, and I think Mr. Clanton was mentioning. So, we have goals, and we have non-negotiables, we have, um, progress measures that we are going to receive related to the non-negotiables. The report that we received is almost like a needs assessment, that can help establish, um, what we would be monitoring, and then, um, and then we need to kind of do a review of, of, of our policy manual in general, in terms of how it aligns with, um, the goals and non-negotiables that we've established, and then that becomes part of, part of our focus. Um, so I, I, I support that, but I just wanted to, so for example, we have as non-negotiable number two, the superintendent will not allow underperforming schools to have low teacher fill rates for prolonged periods, or make extensive use of substitutes, low-performing or professionally licensed staff without implementing a high-impact strategy. So when you look at some of what was reported, in our non-negotiable, we gave a focus on underperforming schools, how we want to define that. Um, and so we could be able to, to pull from that equity report who those schools are, and then we know we get HR reports that we look at monthly, and again, when we're in a meeting, at least twice a year, we could be monitoring the progress towards that goal based upon the measures that the superintendent provides to us, based upon the data that the equity report has, has revealed. But again, we would have prioritized, as a result of these non-negotiables, what we want to spend meeting time on. Doesn't say that we won't look at all of it, but we're in a meeting, if we prioritize having, uh, better fill rates at underperforming schools, then we would be monitoring that in this meeting and see how we're progressing towards it.
And if I, just to add, um, what Mr. Jordan was saying there, so, yeah, we at the board level monitor it, but I think that there needs to be a clear expectation that we're then, once we've monitored, we've identified, that there's a clear expectation from the administration, now come back with recommendations on how to address this, to ensure that we get into this alignment. Um, and, you know, that we do that in a timely fashion, but I, I think monitoring is great, we could, we sort there, but there has to be some circle in there where there's action that's being brought before us, um, that's evidence-based, you know, saying, hey, we do X, Y, and Z, we put the resources, because that's one of the other things we have in here, to ensure that that happens. That's holding the board accountable, to make sure that we hold our responsibility when it comes to the budget, and make sure, um, and that the policy is in alignment. But, um, I, I would agree, again, I, I think that this is good timing with this particular discussion, that it helps with everything else that we're going, because you're right, Mr. Jordan, we, if we've done all these other things, a lot of these goals could probably be replaced, because we've already had that discussion, and, and I think if we bring it back to policy committee, I'll get to hang out with you for a little bit on it.
And the, and the monitoring report is not just looking at the information, but it's having that conversation, because the superintendent administration would be saying to us, like, they kind of did during the budget cycle, and as we were working on these, um, well, we have a challenge with recruitment, or we have, um, uh, what, what is the impact going to be on, um, uh, if the superintendent decides to make some moves? So, in that monitoring report, would be these recommendations of what they see is going well, and what recommendations they would make, and that's right, that action that you're speaking of is right there for us to, to hear, not to, not necessarily dictate-
Yeah.
-but to hear the steps that are being taken towards achieving the goals that we have established.
And we won't be able to dictate if it's coming as a recommendation from the administration, because then we're just supporting what's coming to us.
So the accountability is where it belongs on administrative side, the accountability is where it belongs-
On the board.
-on, on the board side.
All right, great discussion. Um, I think we'll wrap this up. So, um, with that, we're going to move into our next item, which, which is, um, sorry, am I going to let my glasses on? We're going into, yeah, we are going into closed session. I'm just trying to find where it is on the agenda. Anyways, Bob-
Let me do it? I move that we go into an exact closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Clanton.
And Dr. Gabriel seconded.
I move that the members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the School Board of the City of Norfolk pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A1 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the session is the discussion of qualifications of applicants for temporary appointment to the school board seat for Ward Five. Discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including discussion of the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A29 of the Act, and the disposition of publicly-held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating in an open meeting would adverse, adverse, adversely affect the bargaining position, negotiating, negotiating strategy of, I need, fix my readers, y'all. Give me some new readers. Um, in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A3 of the Act. The subject of the portion of this closed session is to discuss an unsolicited proposal concerning Maurya High School filed with the board pursuant to Public Private Educational Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002 and Board Policy DJFZ. Consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provisional legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 2.2-3711A8 of the Act. The subject of this portion of the session is for legal advice regarding the matters set above in subsection A and B of this motion. Basine? It sounds like she, did she pop up?
Aye.
Uh, Buffalo?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye.
All right. Stay here. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
I move that we come out of executive closed session.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clanton.
A resolution certifying executive meeting of the School Board of the City of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the School Board of the City of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires the certification by the School Board of the City of Norfolk, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the School Board of the City of Norfolk hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the School Board of the City of Norfolk. Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye. Okay, now can I get a motion to appoint one of the Ward Five school board candidates to the Ward Five position?
Dr. Martin, I move that we accept the candidate, Nichelle Stone, as the Ward Five candidate to fulfill the vacated seat by Lauren Camson.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a second?
May I offer a friendly amendment, um, that will end-
expire.
-expire on December 31st of 2024. Let me, yep, 2024.
Okay.
Accepted.
Is that your second, too?
No. This is my friendly amendment.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Basine. Ms. Tanner, please call the role, or the question.
Basine?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone, and with that, our meeting is adjourned.